Okay, good evening, everyone. This is the school committee. It's September 5th. And let me go ahead and start with our meeting script. As the Chair of this meeting, I need to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. School committee members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mary Branley?
Here.
Hillary Griffiths?
Yes, but my internet's very cranky.
Okay, that's all right. I can hear you so far. We're good. Mauro Hogan? Alexis Fishbone?
Here.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Colleen Andrade?
Yes.
Brian Haas?
Yes.
And we have both of the Charleses tonight, Chuck and Charles. So aren't we lucky? And Wayne, is Wayne? I know.
Yeah.
Either way, I'll keep ringing.
I don't see him yet, but.
Okay, yeah, I think he said he would be here. But okay, and then I know we have. I don't think there's necessarily speaking rules, but I just want to make sure we acknowledge Keith, can you hear if we have any questions for you?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, and Karen?
Linkless? Okay, and Karen?
Oh, I'm really, that was funny. Karen, can you hear? Okay?
That was funny.
Right, and, okay.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you. I can hear Karen, but I think there's a delay somewhere. I don't know if it's me or.
There's a delay. Oh, can you hear me?
Yes, okay. Heather, can you hear? Okay?
I can hear you.
Okay, wonderful. All right, let me get back to my verbiage here. Oh geez. Okay, this open meeting of the Maynard School Committee is being conducted as a remote meeting as allowed by Chapter Two of the Act of 2023, signed into law by Governor Healy on March 29, 2023. The Act continues to exempt certain provisions under open meeting law regarding remote meetings and public access until March 31, 2025. This committee is convening via Zoom as posted on the district's website, while an option for remote attendance is also being provided as a courtesy to the public. The meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt. And just to kind of hold on there, I know that the school committee has decided to, we're going to be pivoting to remote for the interim basis. So if there is technological issues, the meeting itself will be suspended because obviously none of us will be able to. So that's a little bit of a deviation and we would have to reschedule from wherever we pick up or wherever we leave off. Please note that this meeting is being recorded accordingly. Be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording, which is audible to and viewable by the public. If you plan on recording or broadcasting this meeting, please use the raise your hand function now to notify the Chair as required by law. I don't see any hands. Great. The public comments agenda item is devoted for the school committee to hear from the public as such. Its structure primarily supports a unidirectional recording of public comments rather than a bidirectional conversation. Here are the general ground rules for any form of public comments. Any person wishing to speak and make a comment during a virtual meeting such as tonight may do so by speaking in advance and signing up, sorry, signing up to speak in advance until the public comment agenda item on the link provided on the agenda. This, please have your Zoom name match that that will be able to unmute you to speak. All public comments or lists are limited to three minutes, so ensure that everyone has, to ensure that everyone who wishes to comment has an opportunity to be heard. No person may comment more than once without permission of the Chair. As time allows, a Chair could consider allowing a person to comment a second time, especially if it's related to a topic that has not yet been brought up. Any person wishing to submit a written comment may do so by emailing commentsforscmeeting@maynard.k12.us. The subject line must state public comments. Please include your first and last name and your town to ensure your comments are read. Comments will be read only for three minutes. If the submitted comments are longer, they'll be suspended at the three-minute mark to ensure all comments are read in their entirety. It is suggested that you keep them to approximately 350 words. However, submitted comments longer than 350 words will be included in the record in their entirety. Anyone wishing to submit comments for the public record after the public comments agenda item has passed can do so also by emailing commentsforscmeeting@maynard.k12.us up until the end of the meeting, specifically stating their desire to have these additional comments included. Before we go on to the first amendment agenda, I'm going to permit me to review some ground rules. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda after they can conclude their remarks. I will ask each member if they have comments, questions, or motions they'd like to make. I will go through the members for additional comments or questions. If time allows, please hold off speaking until your name is called. And remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. If members wish to engage with other members, please do so through the Chair and take care not to interrupt anyone who is speaking. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting must be recorded by a roll call vote since all members are remote. Before we move on, I will go ahead and call the meeting to order via roll call vote. Mary Branley?
Here.
Alexis Fishbone?
Here.
Hillary Griffiths?
Here.
Mara Hogan?
Here.
Natasha Rivera, yes. All right. And now, that's at 7:08, call the meeting order. Public comments? I didn't see anything. Colleen, anything, anybody sign up? Nobody signed up for anything? Okay. All right, so. Let me just see, there's no hands that are raised. Okay. Moving on to urgent business, Superintendent Haas, do we have any urgent business?
Can you hear me or am I muted?
I can hear you.
Oh, excellent. I'm not muted. I love it. No urgent business, lots of business, nothing urgent to supersede.
Okay, great. And then. Oh, Kate, hi. I know this is your first, I want to take a moment to recognize because everybody else got a hello from me earlier. So welcome to the school committee meeting. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm excited to be here.
Great, excited to have you. I'm so excited how much staff can participate when it is remote. So I just want to call that out and I really thank you all for joining in when you can. Okay, so no urgent business. Then we move on now to the superintendent report. Brian?
Okay, so we're going to do a couple of things. So opening of schools, I gave principals the opportunity because we were, they could either tune in live and share their own updates because they are all very positive. Or if they're like, I'm really busy tonight, or in Liz's case, she earned the night off, she sent me something. So I'll start by reading the high school update.
I hope you didn't give her like PTSD, please.
You guys didn't. She is fine. She had, she was a busy day today with field hockey stuff and whatnot, but all good stuff. But overall, the opening was really fabulous from our convocation to our professional development days, teacher meetings, to the welcoming of students in all three buildings. Chuck and I had the opportunity to visit all three buildings on the first day, within the first few days. And really, and I hear this over and over from real teachers, secretaries, parents, that it was a smooth opening. Perfect? No. Was it smooth? Was it positive? Absolutely, yes. See, Karen's laughing. I'm not stealing her thunder. I can't wait to hear what she has to share. But we'll start at the high school just because Liz is not here. And she shared that schools underway at Maynard High School for the year. They started the year with a whole, a whole school assembly, and the theme was your presence matters. Student council did a fabulous job as they always do, leading each grade and the teachers in a dance contest that had everyone laughing and clapping. Each grade had a class meeting on the first day as well. I'm happy to report that the new phone procedures are going very well in the classrooms. Not a phone was in sight as teachers and students got to know each other and previewed this year's curriculum. Phone-free classrooms aren't easy, but as we gathered for an ice cream social on Thursday after school last week, the faculty and staff agreed that the change is worth the effort. So with that, before I go on to my other comments within my report, I was going to have Keith and then Karen go, and they're welcome to stay as long as they want. But Keith, you're on.
Awesome. Hi, everybody. Thank you for having me tonight. So we had a very successful start to the year. We've kicked off the year without a hitch. The most important part of our jobs in our, in our environment is our students, and they're happy. The ones I've been able to speak to during both arrival, dismissal, lunchtimes, fast transitions have all reported that their year is going really great so far, which is really great news. Backing up that, our staff through just an informal survey that I have done, you know, as well as, you know, my conversations with staff, which are constantly always happening, but they're all reporting that they're, they're happy and they're a loving follower in the Maynard Public School. Our first day was fantastic. We kicked it off with an entire school assembly where we all met in the gym and then we proceeded outside to kick off our school year with our whole school wave, which I was able to share a video of within our smores. You know, that represents the simple, you know, strength of a wave, working together and, and going around the circle. And that's kicking off our school year, symbolizing that we are working together as one. You know, our first several days of school, all of our grades have really worked on emphasizing building relationships and establishing grade level expectations and norms. That's been going really great. Our elementary grades are hosting morning meetings every morning. Both Mr. Snyder, who wasn't able to be here tonight, I mean, that's the luxuries of having three, three young boys, in his case, under the age of 10, all doing different sports. So he wasn't able to join us, but I want to kick that in. But we've been able to join every classroom at least twice in the elementary levels during their morning meetings. Kids are super happy, super psyched, laughing, and you know, doing what we want them to do, smiling and enjoying school. Our middle schoolers are also adjusting really well. The new locks in the lockers is definitely challenging for some, but they're doing great. And they're adjusting to set times that they're allowed to go to the lockers, moving classes and building relationships within their, within their grades, which is fantastic. So this year also, so we have incredible veteran staff that has been great, but our new staff are adjusting very nicely. We've got several new staff members. I've been able to formally meet with almost all of them. I think my last couple of meetings are tomorrow with them, just to kind of talk to them and, you know, see where they are in terms of what they need for support. And those are the formal meetings. We've had many informal meetings throughout the days. And we've had the opportunities to visit all the classrooms multiple times. September 11th, we have a PTO sponsored BMX bike presentation coming in. It's a bunch of professional BMX bikers that will all take place out in our giant parking lot for our entire school, where they'll be focusing on establishing a bully-free learning environment. And last but not least, for good news, just like Liz had reported to everybody, our phone-free policy has been a great success. Even better for me, being a little bit selfish here, I've had zero negative feedback, which is fantastic. You know, we've not had any issues with phones. I have not seen any phones out, which is fantastic. Literally from bell to bell, kids are adjusting nicely. It's really fantastic. I think that was a really positive and great move on our district's part to kind of implement that this year.
I actually, just to add to that, I, when I had to stop by today, I, when I was trying to get into the office, I was afraid to pull out my cellphone in the hallway because I, because I was like empty and I was like, I was like, someone's going to be like, look at her.
Yeah. It's been great.
I went back to head Joanne.
I haven't seen any earbuds, which is fantastic. You know, it's really, really good. It feels like, you know, I've been doing this for, I've been doing this for 24 years and this year, for some reason, feels like it's the most successful, smooth kickoff, which is really great.
Great, wonderful. I don't know if anyone has any questions for Keith or Fowler kickoff, Mary?
I just had a comment, Keith. I happen to be going through the parking lot at Fowler. I forget why the other day. I love all the signage. I love the signage in the parking, cafeteria about where, you know, where the kids go, where the parents go and where not to go. So thank you for that. It's really good. It's, it's been a little chaotic in the past, so those signs really pointed out well.
Absolutely. No orange barrels have been hit yet, so that's pretty good.
I see Hillary has her hand up. I know she's having some audio issues, so she may have called in. Hillary, are you?
Yeah, yeah. Sorry, I'm on the phone, so I don't have video, but I have audio. I was just wondering how, if it worked okay with the election on Tuesday? And if that created more chaos or if that was okay for the operations of the school?
Yeah, no, I was able to spend, you know, certain periods of time out in that lobby area throughout the day. Traffic wise, there was no issues that I observed or that were reported to me. The voters coming in, I mean, it's always a bit of a struggle with having the access to the bathrooms. We really limit the space where, you know, visitors can walk through. So it's, you know, it's not an open area. The police officer was asked to be, you know, specifically out there during that time when our kids are arriving, you know, as well as throughout the day, but more specifically during that arrival time where our kids gather in the lobby and then transition from the cafeteria, you know, for breakfast. It was really great. It was smooth. Certainly, certainly a different environment. I'm going to imagine if we were to be in school in November, but luckily we're not in, so that's great, but it worked well.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mauro, any, any questions or? Awesome. And Alexis?
Nope, I don't have any questions.
All right. Keith, thank you so much. You answered my question I was going to ask about the election. I heard the select board also indicated it was successful as well. So I just, you know, kudos to you and town, working in collaboration and Brian to, you know, putting that on. I know it's not always an easy undertaking, so much appreciated.
It's also great to see the kids, you know, have the kids see the democracy at work. So that piece of it, I think, is, you know, should also be noted that, that that was important, so.
Great.
Thank you for the time tonight, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, Keith. And we have Karen Linkwest here to talk about the opening of Green Meadow.
Here to talk about the.
Oh.
Everybody, you know, first day is one of formally.
Yeah. Oh, Karen, I think, I think we're having some issues. Can everyone hear her? Okay, or is it just kind of, no, Karen, you might need to join, log out and maybe join back in. It's like a delay, I think. Okay, maybe while she's doing that, Brian?
Yeah.
I don't know. Oh, actually.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you fine.
Okay, I could. You, I can.
I don't know now, actually, because I realize you did Liz's, so we don't have another principal. Kate, how was your first day? And let's just, how was your first day in the district and with the opening school? Tell me your experience.
Well, I'm so happy to be at Green Meadow and I feel like our first couple of days went so well. And it's just been such a pleasure to see the students kind of, I know Karen will touch upon this, but, you know, just going over the routines and having students who really want to be back at school. Karen, you're back. I just started a little bit. I didn't say any, I didn't steal anything from you.
No. There's no.
It's choppy.
Yeah, I don't know. Maybe if you turn your, maybe you video off, maybe it will.
Turn your, maybe you video off, maybe it will.
And I need to stop talking too, because I keep hearing myself.
Hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, you can hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Now?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Kate. Kate has been. To have her at Green Meadow. Is the Green Meadow staff has been.
Karen, I feel bad. I think we're only getting like every other word.
I wonder if you call in, just call in.
Help with this. I wonder if you.
Heather, while, while she's doing that, I saw that you had your hand up. I don't know if you wanted to share.
Sure. Well, first I put it up just because I felt bad that there was no one talking while we're waiting for Karen to come back on. But what I was going to say is, in addition to each of the building having an opportunity to welcome back their staff, I also welcomed back the special education staff just on their own as well. I had one session where I just met with all of the ABA and paras, and then I had a session where I met with all the other special education staff. And we got to dive into some new IP conversations. We also reviewed some timelines and other regulations. So it was a really nice way to kick off the year, bringing the whole department together. So, and that was in addition to them participating in their welcome backs at their buildings.
Thank you, Heather. And Heather, I just wanted to mention, because I did see that on the day's agenda that, for the first day for staff, that you were meeting with the paras, and I just thought that was just great. I know it's not maybe something that they get often, you know, your full attention or that position. And I know that when we, we've always been looking for, that's just to make sure that they, they're just such an active group. And I'm just appreciative that they got to have you one-on-one for that time. So thanks for making that work out.
Absolutely. I enjoyed it. So I'm glad I got similar feedback from them as well, or those of them that came up to approach me. So it was a great way to start the year off.
Wonderful. So. I don't know if we have.
I wonder if Kate has access to the same information and can share it since Karen's having some technological difficulties.
Yeah, I feel such.
Yeah, I was trying to, we, we did chat about it today. So do you want to, I can, I could get it. And then you move on and I'll get it and then you can come back to me?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, so I, we can certainly move on because I can talk about the MSBA. So, and it's too bad Karen's trying to log on because she's at most of the same meetings and there were four of them this week. So that Green Meadow building project, definitely underway there. We had a great meeting about recess equipment, a ton of fun, and it's Karen's there, staff is there. And it's really interesting just to hear the conversation about why they recommend which pieces of equipment, things that, quite frankly, I would not think of, like, for example, the slide, that was a big discussion. So the base slide is a tube, an all-included slide, which we didn't, which people did not like. And so the alternative is an open slide, kind of like what I think most of us would have grown up with. It's a little more expensive, but we said, well, we want to get what we want to, you know, we want to get what we think is best for our community and the open slide was that. So there's been conversations and meetings about recess equipment, about furniture, about just a planning, about the 60 to 90% completion documents. It's super busy, all moving along, all within budget. MSBA seems happy with us because we had a very brief meeting with them at their request as part of the process about different programs that buildings, building projects can partake in in terms of where they get equipment and furniture and whatnot. And so it's been a really busy week this week, end of last week. If you've been there, you've seen the fencing perimeter was installed right before school started. So the jersey barriers are up, the fencing is up with sort of the silk covering, so you can't see through it. The office trailer and equipment have been delivered on site for the construction people on their side of the fence, surveying in the field located behind the existing schools in progress. Test pits have been performed to locate existing utility lines. And the next big thing will be in the next couple of weeks will be blasting. And Karen and Kate have been working with Phil and Chris to make sure, and I can't remember the guy's name now, who's in charge of the blasting, maybe Tom, but they're going to come and actually do a little bit of a presentation for the kids so they know what's happening, making it sort of part of their curriculum, a little bit, part of the life of what they're doing. So really, MSBA well on the way. Let me turn it back over to Karen and then I'll continue after her.
Thanks, Brian.
I talked about MSBA, not your opening, so now you're on.
That was a wild ride. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Thanks for your patience and thanks Keith Kenny for coming to the rescue. You know, at this point, you've probably heard everybody jump in and talk a little bit about all of the wonderful things that have been happening at Green Meadow. I think, you know, when I was breaking up a little bit, what I was trying to share was just how amazing our Green Meadow staff has been over our opening days. They've been overwhelmingly supportive as we ease into our school building project, as we welcome new preschoolers and kindergarteners, new families, grades one through three, and lots of familiar faces back this week. So we can't thank them enough. We've gotten a lot of positive feedback from both staff and families about the consistent communication, which there's been a lot of in our first five days of school for various reasons. You know, we're welcoming back 462 students at Green Meadow, which is really exciting. Our grade one continues to be our largest class with 111 students and our kindergarten classes are not that far behind. And our preschool has 60 students with more who will be enrolling as they age into our program. So it's a really vibrant community right now. We also welcomed over 60 English language learners to our school, which is really exciting and has brought just a lot of positive and wonderful pieces to our community. As you know, the construction fencing is up at Green Meadow. Northern Construction has been really great with communicating with us about their project timelines, about everything that's going to be happening. We've had several team meetings that we've been including staff in, including, this week we met with the landscape architects to do some playground design work. And we brought our OT and our PT into the conversation as well as our BCBA. Our PE teacher had previously been part of some earlier conversations that happened last spring. So really exciting things to come with this new project. Our staff had attended some math PD training before school started to implement our new math curriculum, which is going really well considering it's day five. And anytime you implement new curriculum, it comes with, you know, a little bit of, of just anticipation and everybody getting their brains around a new structure. But the kids have been really engaged in the math lessons and feedback from staff has been, you know, anytime you take on something new, there's, there's a lot of work involved, but they're feeling really positive about student reaction participation with the curriculum. We're continuing to implement our new ELA curriculums. And our pre-K team is using a new curriculum called Broad Street that they did their training on last spring and that they are implementing this year. So lots of really great work happening at Green Meadow. As you know, we had some opportunities to test our safety response plans last week, and I'm happy to report that our protocols were successful in every situation. We're really grateful to our facilities staff for their quick response to our WASP situation on site. And, you know, we continue to be grateful to the Maynard Fire Department and Police Department for their support, both with their medical response last week and with our fire drill, which is new, it's some new planning involved with our construction project. But everything went really smoothly and I think most importantly, our students are settling into their routines. And we today, we had our first bus meeting with all of the bus students gathered together to talk about expectations and rules and answer any of their questions. You know, about like, what happens if nobody's waiting for you at your bus stop? And, you know, what happens if you get on the wrong bus? And so we had some great discussion about how we're here to support students in this situation. So overall, just a good start. And, you know, again, I can't thank Keith Kenny and Brian and Chuck and Charles for all their support as Kate and I get established as a new administrative team at Green Meadow.
Wonderful. That was, I'm glad we were able to get you because that was a lot we would have missed. Thank you so much for that, that update. And I know Mary probably can speak a little bit, but I know that there's been a lot of communication this luck board also gave about the Green Meadow and the, you know, getting started with all the, the fencing and whatnot. So it would be great, you know, I know Brian, just to make sure that we get an update on how that community feedback is responding to that on a, now that we're, they're kind of noise, potential noise and things are ticking up. I think hopefully people are more excited than anything to, that we're, you know, kind of breaking ground there. So thank you so much. And I just want to go through the rest of the school committee, Karen, to see if anyone has any questions or some feedback for you. Mary, anything?
No, just Karen, thank you so much for, and Kate, I guess for, for, I mean, there was just a, you know, short note that was sent out to parents about this is what's going on this week as far as the new construction goes and that. And I think that's the way to do it, just, you know, little snippets that people will definitely read and just keeping them updated and while you. And while you were trying to re-log on, Brian was saying that the, um, the blasting, um, company is going to incorporate the kids, which I think is always phenomenal. So learning, learning time. So thank you for that also.
It reminds me of when they had the solar, um, how the students at the solar, they kind of turned that into a learning opportunity, um, bits and pieces when that was at the high school. So that's great. Um, Hillary, did you have any questions or feedback?
Um, no questions. I just thank you so much. I love that you're, um, taking the feedback from the OT and PT for the playground. And, um, the updates for Green Meadow, I've seen it from a couple of different sources. So I really like that they're shared widely. Um, so people miss it one time, there's another opportunity for them to see it. Um, and then great job handling that start to school and that excitement, um, so successfully.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mauro?
Um, I don't have anything specific for Green Meadow, but, um, I'm loving all the updates. Um, I don't recall, um, in previous years getting updates from, from each, um, school. And especially, um, Heather, um, thank you for your, um, your update on how that's a first also. So thank you so much.
Yeah. Alexis?
I don't have any questions, but it is, I agree with Mauro. It's nice to get these updates. I only get updates from one school, um, where my kids are at. So it's nice to hear, um, about what's going on at the other schools.
Great. Um, and I'll just say ditto for everything that everyone said. I appreciate everyone's, you know, summer has ended and we're back into school. Um, it was cute seeing all the, I think teachers kind of getting back in as well, but I really, um, glad it's been successful so far. So.
Just make one, one more general comment, um, that Brian sent out a note to everybody before the Labor Day weekend. I think all the staff to say that Boston Magazine has, um, has Maynard as number forty-seven in the state, Brian, I think.
Correct.
Yeah, that is like huge, huge.
And the four, number four for the bang for your buck.
And number four for the bang for your buck. So kudos to all the hard work and everything that all the staff, um, has put together to, um, put us there. So just, uh, overall, thank you.
I think in the years since you, oh yeah, I was going to mention it later, but I think in the years that, um, I've seen that, that, I don't think that's the highest we've been, Brian. So I don't know, Maynard forty-seven. I think we, it's not been often that we've broken or come within that fifty. Um, you know, considering the, the group that, you know, there's a lot of well-funded communities there. Um, so I just think that, uh, it was, it's, yeah, Mary, thank you for.
That's okay. So I happened to be with a client last week that is enacting.
People look at that.
Their kids are enacting and he brought it to my attention. He's like, wow, Maine is really doing well. I'm like, yes, we are. And, and going back to where we've been in the past, I remember us being like a hundred and fifty-one.
Yeah.
There you go. So.
I didn't want to say that, but I was like, yeah, I don't think we've ever, ever been in the first fifty. I was like, wow, we're in the first fifty.
So just, just a general thank you to everybody because it's all, everybody's had work.
It is.
And I think we need to really share the bang for your buck piece at town meeting because I think historically there's been, you know, complaints that we don't spend money well. And I think that's the proof that that's just not even close to true.
A good idea.
Good point.
All right. Um, I think Brian, thank you all for your updates.
Why, I have one more thing. I have two more things. Yeah, okay. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Keith, Karen, Kate, Heather, who else is on there? Well, we'll, we'll get to Charles momentarily.
Brady Box, yeah.
Exactly. But late in the day today, I got an email from Byron Woodman. You should know his name. And as of today, the Maynard High School is officially receiving solar power from both the canopy and the rooftop systems. Um, so we're in process of setting up a transition meeting to review the systems monitoring documentation and the educational component. But we couldn't do any of that until we were actually operational. So it just happened late today. Um, and the other thing that you'll be involved in, uh, we'll do a dedication ceremony at some point this fall. We'll be in, I'll be in communication with you about that. So that's exciting though.
That's very, very exciting. Oh my gosh. I don't know. Yeah. When I, when I think about the first iteration of that, that plan was to take the place of behind Green Meadow and rent that out for twenty-plus years. I'm so glad that we did not pursue. And.
Right. So we're in a good place with that right now.
Yes.
And now.
Thanks for everyone.
Oh, you're welcome. Yeah. And last thing, where's Charles? He's here. Put him on the spot. We're going to talk about grant approvals.
Yeah.
And.
And Charles, before you get started, I just wanted to, um, um, Wayne, the, um, cost center for these, I just wanted to confirm, is this all going to go to instruction? Or, or Charles, do you, I just need to get the, the code for more of a procedural. So what I, I'm crafting my motion. Um, want to make sure.
Where are the additional funding from the town?
No, the grants.
No, for the grants.
Is it two hundred or two thousand? Is that, or is it instruction or?
None of those are all cost centers for the operational budget. Grants aren't in the operational budget.
But we attribute them to the cost center.
Yeah, we attribute them, we allocate like, like our expense where we're expending it. So that's what we've done historically. We've had a cost center that we're allocating it to.
Find out where they're going to spend the money. I don't.
And they're all, they're all instruction. We can.
Okay. So I think it's two thousand. So I'll just, I'll go with that. Um.
If you say cost center with instruction, that's fine.
Got it. Okay. Great. Thank you.
Good. I'm on.
Charles, you want to walk us through?
Yes.
Okay. First of all, um, Chuck and I are very pleased. We, um, we got our own, own report card. Are the, the title grants, so we're due, uh, due September thirteenth and we had them in by August thirteenth, a month early, which is great. And we had to go through the processes, quite enough, um, it's quite a process. But I'm happy to report they've all been approved, both the programs and the fiscal spending. So we're, with your approval, the school committee, we're set to spend the money. Okay. The first grant is Title One, um, Grant Three, Three O Five. And that is for a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars. Um, the, the grant is used, uh, in, well, four different ways. First of all, it pays the sal, it pays most of the salaries of our Title One teachers, one at Green Meadow and one at Fowler. Uh, high school is not eligible for Title One, just Green Meadow and Fowler. Green Meadow, we service students in grades K to three and Fowler, uh, all the way grades four to eight. So, uh, it's a change this year because we used to just service students in grades four and five. And this year we wrote the grants to service students all the way through eighth grade, which we really need. Uh, mostly literacy and pretty much all literacy and math. So a hundred and sixty thousand dollars goes to the salary. We have a fee we need to pay because the way grants work, if you can believe this fee, it's an MTRS fee, Massachusetts Teacher Retirements. It doesn't help any teachers. It's just a fee for grants. That fee is fourteen thousand, four hundred dollars. So nine percent of any salaries that are spent. So, um, Wayne and I have worked very carefully, um, um, to, to, to make sure that we minimize the number of the way that we use salaries or grants for Title One. We really have no choice. We have to have, um, Title One teachers. But in, um, as we will, you'll find out in a couple of weeks when we talk about our special, um, education grants, that none of that is used for salaries, just for the purpose of saving that nine percent, because that's a lot of money. We also are obligated to set aside, um, some, uh, money for, for homeless students. Homeless doesn't mean that you're out on the street. It means you don't have a place to stay. You can be staying with relatives and what have you. And we use, uh, we, uh, we set aside, uh, two thousand dollars so that it's just supplies that are needed. Sometimes it's technical supplies, sometimes it's clothing, whatever else. And then the rest of the money, two thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars is for, um, supplies. So that's a total for the Three O Five Grant of a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars. Okay. I don't know. I, I, shall I go through all the grants so then we can do questions?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Our second grant is, um, uh, it's called Title Two A. It's Grant Number One Forty. And the purpose of that is really professional development. And in keeping with, um, a, a serious goal that we have for the year is we're trying to increase strategies to narrow the achievement gap between our, our general population and our students who are, we recall from historically marginalized groups. That is our EL students, our special ed students, our students who might be from, um, impoverished homes or what it might be. So, uh, a huge goal for us is to narrow that gap and you'll be, and O'Brien will be talking about that as, as the year goes on. So we're using, um, a good amount of money for, uh, for that. We're doing, um, we're doing eleven thousand dollars, um, for, uh, part of it is for, uh, EL, uh, paraprofessional working at the high school, uh, working at the high school. Part of it is for, um, professional, um, increasing strategies to use, as I said, uh, for, for outside PD. And, um, um, the, uh, uh, and we also using it for, um, for instructional coaches and for some, so, and some, for some supplies. That grant totals twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight dollars. And it's all used for professional involvement, all really for the purpose of helping students who, um, who, who are not achieving as well as they could be. And generally, some of the things are, the strategy that we talk about for, for students in need are strategies we can use with all students. So it's not, you know, exclusive, but it's the emphasis on seeing what we can do to narrow that, um, achieving gap. So that grant is for twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight dollars. The third grant, um, is Title Three, and that is not as much as we would like it to be. It's, um, it's just fourteen thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars. And we're under Title Three, that's a grant for, especially for, um, English learners. That grant has to be used for three ways. Part of it is, um, as I mentioned before, the salary for our, um, um, our profession, for our, um, paraprofessional that we have at the high school, just to help with EL students. Um, um, part of that grant is using to part, not the whole salary, but part of that salary. We also use, uh, that'd be eight thousand dollars. We're using four thousand dollars for our, our liaison, a stipend for liaison for our LPAC. That's a hundred hours at forty dollars an hour. And the rest is used for, um, outside professional development, just to help us, uh, with the PD for helping teachers and free strategies to use with the EL learners. And that's fourteen thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars. Our last grant, Title Four, is for eleven thousand, uh, for, um, eleven thousand, nine eighty-nine. And what we did is we took that grant and we, we call it flex. We put all that because what I mentioned before is such a huge issue this year, a huge, um, initiative this year is reducing that achievement gap. As I talked about it, we put that whole eleven thousand, nine eighty dollars into assist teachers in assessment, using assessment data and tailoring instruction to meet the needs of our, of, of all students. But with particular emphasis on students who are in need. So those are our four grants. I'll repeat the totals again, if that, if that helps. Uh, the first one is Title, Title One, one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars. Title Two A, twenty-eight thousand, um, two hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Title Three, fourteen thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars. And Title Four, eleven thousand, nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars. And I'll be very glad to answer questions about the grants.
Um, I have a quick question and I'll just go around, um, how do, for the, because these are entitlement grants, right? That we, we get standard.
Yes.
Um, are you seeing any trends, um, particular, you mentioned about the, the, the one that really earmarked fund, um, supporting EL? Um, are you seeing any trends with?
Yeah, it's going down.
Yeah, I'm just wondering how, how that is like in a formula work? Because I mean, I know that the learners, our population is increasing and I heard Karen mentioning like we had sixty or something that, so I'm just curious on how.
I'll start with Title One. Title One is really based on poverty rate. And, uh, at one time, the poverty rate was close to forty percent and what years ago in Maynard. The poverty rate now is only twenty-four percent, which is still high, but it's, um, it's nowhere near the forty percent. So the most, the most money goes to cities and towns that have a poverty rate of, of, of forty percent or more. So we're not close to that. So we're, we're, we're finding that we cannot keep up with the salaries that we once had with teachers with our MTRS stipend. So it's going down. It, not, not huge amount, but it's not keeping up with inflation in any way.
Right. Okay. All right. That's unfortunate. Uh, thank you for.
But we have some, in a, in a sense, we were very fortunate last year that we received some other grants that helped us, which were competitive grants. And you never know if competitive grants are going to get them or not, than the title of grants we know we have.
Right, right. Well, even apparently, um, you, you still can't necessarily rely on a certain amount because if it's going down, that's not a good, a good basis.
And grants are always, they, they always say it's like a gift. We're not, you know, it's not yet. It's not part of your, uh, your.
Budget.
Budget, yeah.
Yeah. Um, all right. Thank you.
And Chuck, I think Chuck wants to add something.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. I just had the, uh, the actual total dollars of the four grants are fairly flat down slightly. But obviously in the inflationary environment, we've seen over the last couple of years, being flattened dollars actually means, uh, less, less service.
All right. Thank you for that sad fact of reality there. Um, Alexis, any questions?
I do. I actually have a question about the Title One money for, um, at risk of homeless and families, for students and families who don't have stable housing. Um, the two thousand dollars that's required in years past, have you found that that amount is not enough to help support those families?
Um, um, that's a good question because, um, right now we've also had some, uh, we, we actually had a, um, a, a, amount of money set aside, uh, for, um, homeless students through another grant.
That was another question I had.
Right. So it, it's just part of, um, of some areas. And we've, uh, one of the things that we've done when we've had any, if we haven't spent all our money, we buy extra, it could be backpacks, it could be school supplies, in some cases, technology, um, um, to have in it. So we're in pretty good shape. Last year we had set aside four thousand and consulting, after consulting with Desi, we thought two thousand would be enough, considering we also have some other grants.
Okay. Because my other question was, you have other grant money that helps support them? And then how are the students and families identified? Is there a HUD, uh, liaison point of contact within the district?
Yes.
Okay. At, at the high school or?
For the whole district, right. Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, Mauro?
Uh, I have a question about the salaries, um,
Right.
mainly for the first one, it looks to me like the other ones are like just stipends, which cover. So are these two new, new people?
Yeah. One is, one is, the one person at Green Meadow has been there for, for several years. Person at Fowler is brand new. Um, continue, taking Denise Hatch's place.
Oh, okay. But so it's really just replace, like this person is replacing Denise, right? Okay. So these are, these are positions that we've already had. And then, so we're just using this money to cover their, their salaries. It's not like these are new employees that were.
No, no, it's not, it's not just enough. It's, it's.
Okay. So, and that they're not going to be like, you know, let go at the end of the year.
No, no, we, 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 we were sure that we, even though the money is, uh, is going down, uh, it, we're, we're not expecting it, you know, such a huge, we will be able to afford the salaries each year.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Hillary?
I have a couple of questions and some of it could be because I'm cutting in and out a little bit. Um, for the homeless, the money set assigned for homeless students, does any of that get, um, used for transportation? Or is it free to be used for?
It can be used to transportate. Yes. Uh, this, it can be used for transportation, yes. And as I mentioned, we do have other grants as well that can be used for transportation for homeless.
So I'm sure that cost is huge.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, do you end up having leftover after the transportation to cover needs, other needs?
Yeah, we, yeah, we, as I said, this year we had a little bit of money and we spent it on, um, uh, sort of sto, stocking, you know, some, some supplies that we would have in, in case, because, you know, things come up. We don't, you know, when, when you're dealing with, um, with homes, you don't, you don't always get advanced warning, you know, so it's nice.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and then, so with the Title One poverty rate going down, is any of that due to not having, um, free and reduced school lunch applications? Like, by any chance, someone was estimating that?
No, I, I know a lot of people think, oh, that, that, that's, that's, a lot of people think it's tied into free and reduced lunch. But, um, no, it's, it's, it's just what, however they do the statistics. It's not, you know, it's because we, you know, as you know, lunch is for, is for free right now and breakfast. And I, and it looks like it will be.
Yeah. Like, how do they get the data?
Uh, uh, I'm not sure how it's.
Where are they getting that number from? Is that from?
Yeah, it's kind of, it comes to us, it, it, when you, it actually has right to the figure exactly what the poverty rate is at each school. Um, and it's done, it's already pre-populated for us by Desi. Um, and it's done, it's already pre-populated for us by Desi. And the figures that they give.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, you went like super robotic, Hillary. So I, we, yeah, we didn't catch any of that. Okay, I'm gonna, Colleen, are you doing a time check? I see.
I just wanted to clarify, we do not charge for transportation.
Yeah.
Okay. Hillary, we can't hear um anything. I just want to make sure you understand. Um, sorry, I don't know if you want to try to call back in. Oh, there you go, hear you, okay. Oh, never mind. Nope, you're 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 Robocop now again, sorry. Okay, um, Mary, I'm gonna move on. It looks like Hillary's gonna hop off and hop back in.
That's okay. So um, my question, it it falls up actually on Alexis about, you know, identifying the students and that. So my question is, how are we helping those students? Because in a lot, to a large extent, I'm thinking that they're tied into the buses after school and that. So are they takeout programs to get these kids caught up or?
It's 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 a combination of both. Some, many times it's in-class support and sometimes it's a pull-up depending upon the needs. What we we do is um, we we um, it um, at the at the school level, they decide um sort of a rank order. Uh, who needs the most support and we, you know, where are we getting support? And Title One is used mostly in literacy and math. The students need support depending on upon their needs, using the data that we have available.
Okay, so it is during the the school day, so um to it there, it is accessible to to all of them that need it.
Right.
Excellent. All right, thank you.
Okay, and did Hillary hop back on or she? Hillary, can you?
I think she probably is, if I got it, she is is looking about how is the poverty rate determined? And um, I can tell you, first of all, it's not, you know, it's not, it's poverty rate from a year ago. It's not, you know, it's not the the exact current rate of this day. But it's um, I'm not sure how it's determined. It's pretty much given to us.
Uh, yeah, I was just, I was just wondering if it was underestimated because of not needing to collect that data from students.
But I'd be glad to check on that and see if I can get some information, you know, yeah.
Um, my last question was, um, and this also could have been because I cut out a bit. Um, the stipends for be working beyond the school day on instructional strategies?
Yeah.
What is that? Can you tell me about that one?
Sure, it's uh, it it's the teachers of the, we have different study groups, for instance, um uh and and professional involvement. Um, so and and since last year, we had a math committee. Um, and uh this year, we'll have different kinds of committees to um K to twelve. Trying to find out um what's going on. Are we, you know, where our strengths are, where our weaknesses are, especially trying to zero in. We get from um a a new testing data we have, that's called MAPS. We get, you know, some really good data three times a year. And we can really take a look at not only how all students are doing, but really keying into what are we doing about students who are, and as we call it. Historically marginalized groups. Where are we seeing growth? Now, we're not gonna see tremendous of uh immediately, but over time, the hope is that we really see. Uh, narrowing of that gap. And that's a huge issue for us this year.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, so it's so teachers are looking, studying sometime, you know, strategies. And it also can be um, for instance, Keith is going to be doing a book making. Thinking Visible, which is uh for, you know, a book study group for for teachers. Again, talking about what are the instructional strategies that we're using? I I like to call it, we're we're widening our repertoire of skills, because many times, teachers can be very successful in a classroom. But are we reaching some of our most needy kids who need, you know, different approach? These not necessarily, not necessarily, it's just children, students. But it could be, you know, our ELs, which is a, you know, um, a number of strategies working on that, but also students who have had some problems with attendance. Um, come, you know, come, you know, have, you know, um, you know, our, you know, uh, to just have some difficulties in school. And it's, we we want to use the strategies to really help them.
Great, thank you.
I just want to emphasize it's a long-term goal. We're not gonna see overnight, can be, but we we're really.
Oh, I I think we would definitely need a lot more money to get all that goal. Um, but I I appreciate, I I I'm really happy that we are, we're fine. Whatever, whatever money we're able to get, we're trying to maximize to the best that we can for each student. So um, uh. Charles, thank you so much. Um, I will go ahead. Any other questions?
Or just a point of order, kind of. Um, so on the summary, it said that Title Four was eleven thousand nine eighty nine. But in the description, it says it's twelve thousand eight hundred. So I just want to make sure that we're voting on the right number.
Okay, that, I must have had a typo. I'm so sorry. It is.
Okay, no, 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 just wanna make sure again that we're.
Which one, which one, Mary? Which title?
Uh, number four.
Eleven thousand nine hundred and eighty nine, is that?
Yeah, eleven thousand nine eighty nine, yeah.
Okay, that's the number.
That's the correct one. Okay, yeah.
I'm sorry about that.
Oh, no, 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 that's okay. I I didn't catch that. Um, and then I I did have a question, the the Title Two A Fund. Is that also three oh five? I didn't have a code.
The Title Two A is one eighty. Uh, no, the Title, Title uh.
Two A.
It's uh, two, one forty, one forty.
Okay, got it. That was the only, the other thing. All right, so um, so without any other questions, I'll go ahead and move. That we accept the entitlement grants for Title One Fund three oh five in the amount of one hundred and seventy eight thousand six hundred and ninety five dollars. Title Two A for Fund um Code one forty for twenty eight thousand two hundred and ninety eight dollars. Title Three for Fund Code one eighty for fourteen thousand one hundred and eighty one dollars. And Title Four Fund Code three oh nine for eleven thousand nine hundred and eighty nine dollars and allocate to CAF Center for Instruction.
Second.
Okay, um, any other questions, discussion? All right, um, roll call, Mary Branley?
Yes.
Mara Hogan?
Yes.
Alexis Fishburne?
Yes.
And Hillary Griffiths?
Yes.
And Natasha Rivera, yes. So motion carries.
Thank you, Charles.
So much.
Thank you.
All right. Um, now, Brian, that was, I think, the remainder of your superintendent report?
Correct.
Okay, um, so Mauro, I'm gonna go ahead and throw it to you, if that's okay?
Yep, that's fine.
All right, policies, take it away.
Okay, so to start with EBCFA, um. So we're, the policy subcommittee meeting uh um committee is um suggesting that we rescind this policy. Because um, there's no real reason to have it right now. Um, the CDC is not um suggesting. People wear masks. Um, and obviously, it will be all, it'll be up to the um students. The teachers, um administrators um to wear masks um when they feel that they need them. Um. The um mask, M A S C, which is the Mass um Association of School Committees. Has already rescinded theirs, so we're just following their, in their footsteps. Um, how do you want to do this? Do you want me to go through all of these first?
Um, I think, um, if we go through, because there's some that are just, that are rescind. And then there's, those seem to be easier. Maybe we can just, I can do like a straw poll. If anyone has any question about that particular one. And we can kind of move on to the next one. Um, and then we can just do like one, one vote. Um, if that's okay.
That's fine.
Uh, Hillary?
Yeah, so I was okay with rescinding this one when we met as the policy subcommittee, but now, you know, the email saying about going. Because of school starting and COVID and if, I kind of feel like if we're making the school committee meetings be remote because of COVID. It's kind of hypocritical to say that we're going to increase protections for the school committee by going remote. At the same time, we're taking away the mask policy for students.
Well, people who wear masks, let me just make sure, let me pull up the policy, just so I can make sure the, reading the verbiage to understand. Because I think the policy was more of, in effect, to use masks as a practice, but that's.
The policy was to require them for the five days following the the COVID test. And I think that's out of date and it's, we can't, that's not ever enforced. So it's kind of nonsense to have a policy that's not enforced and not followed. Um, but I also feel like. And I've heard from people who asked about this, um, that it's bizarre to simultaneously in the same meeting. Say, we're gonna be remote because of COVID and to take away the mask policy.
I had put a comment in there about just the one paragraph, the school committee gives the authority to the superintendent. Um, just keep that, because there's the only, you know, the only portion of it. Um, so we give Brian the authority to just put it in place if it seems like it's important. So, know if there was some, if we could add it to to a different policy or just have that be the blanket. Um, because I think that was sort of where we were, you know, where we ended up last year, so.
Um. Yeah, so I, I, I mean, I think it's just illnesses in general, but I've, I don't think it's just COVID, Hillary, that I. Like, I know that's one thing, but there's just generally, like, there, people aren't getting tested necessarily anymore. So it's not necessarily knowing what the illnesses are all for. I know people who've had like pneumonia or, you know, just.
Yeah.
Couple of different things to start off with. And I think it was more of, I, if I'm, I wouldn't want public coming into our school. If we're having a in-person meeting, um, you know, that might get our staff sick or something from the members of the public. Not necessarily protecting us as a school committee, um, just bringing that into um further. So I, I don't, I, I don't know. I I am fine rescinding it myself. Um, and we can always revisit it if. I I would probably want to rely on, I mean, if we keep it, we'd have to amend it and then it, but I, I don't know, I'm not a health expert. So I really don't want to rely on making up some standard that's not really grounded in some state advisory. Um, that's my concern. I mean, I think we, people can wear a mask. I don't know, Brian, what your, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I think if people want to wear a mask, by all means, we don't have very many, if any, right now, doing that. Uh, but they're always welcome to. We support that if they want to, if they need to. And quite frankly, sometimes staff do. If they are just coming back from a sickness, it's more likely to see staff doing it than kids right now. Um.
Okay.
So I think it's fine. And if we got to that point, at some point in the future where we need that, we can make that recommendation. But I think the policy, the recommendation is um to rescind is fine.
Uh, just a quick question and follow-up, Brian, on that thought that you brought up. Have you heard any staff concerns about not having a mask policy? Where they would feel like not protected or anything? I mean, I don't know if, that would be.
I haven't heard anything.
If they, they think that we're, you know. Okay. All right, I mean. I think we either rescind or we have to table it to do a revision. I don't know if I would feel comfortable with any revision unless it was grounded in state guidance. I would rather rescind it and then have another policy that, if the state comes with something, if it, and it could happen like next week, right? That's what happened when we had a policy. We went through all this effort and then the state, you know, released some guidance. So I don't, I don't know. Mary, do you have any?
Yeah, no, like I say, I was just thinking that we would leave that one paragraph, just have that be the protocol so that we don't have to get involved. We trust Brian to, you know, to put something in place, rather than having us have to call a meeting to do it forty eight hours later or that kind of thing.
Well, if we rescind it, that that's not there.
No, I was, that's why I was saying, just we have that paragraph be the, be our protocol, mask wearing. That was, yeah, that's, that was.
Like, like amend it, the policy, and just take everything.
Just to have that paragraph, just to give Brian the authority to do what he feels is needed. So would be my recommendation. If we did anything, or either that or just rescind it and then we revisit it. I just figured it would take us out of the equation. When we don't really need to be.
I would potentially also want to give, you know, the nurses the ability to require masks when they see fit. Like, if somebody's coming in and coughing like crazy, I would like the nurses to have the power to require it in that instance. Um, and I think that, you know, in different states, there's people, you know, saying that people shouldn't be allowed to wear masks. And so leaving the sentence that says, you know, we encourage those who want to wear masks to do so. Um, just like to be supportive of that. So there's, there's things that I would kind of like, but I was okay with rescinding it. Um. I just, it it feels uncomfortable to me to do it today. And then I've heard from somebody at, you know, in the community saying. Why, why are you guys going remote tonight? And why, what are you doing with the mask policy? And I'm like, well, we're going remote because of illnesses and. We're rescinding the mask policy because we don't think it's needed anymore. And those two things kind of seemed, it made me uncomfortable doing, rescinding it today.
Um, Alexis, what are your, what are your thoughts?
Um, I had some of the same questions that Mary had as to, well, if we do rescind it, what authority? Does Brian have to actually put it in place? Because we might potentially need it. Uh, I, however, am not a hundred percent sold on stating that the nurses can require a child to wear a mask. Back into their classroom. I can understand it in the health office. I could, here, I can envision potential blowback. From a parent, uh, and so.
I meant in the nurse's office.
Oh, okay.
Like while waiting to get picked up if like a kid comes down.
That I completely, I am, that I completely understand. And I would be a hundred percent on board with that if the nurses felt that. The students pose some, I I don't like using the word threat, but that there's some virus, some germ that they don't want spreading. Uh, and so I would be in favor of that. Um, I just want to make sure that we have that ability. Regardless of what the state tells us, uh, whether or not there's a state policy. I just want to make sure we have the flexibility within. The school community to make those decisions that are best for the students and staff.
Yeah, I meant like if the, if the, if a kid's gonna, if it's gonna take forty five minutes for a parent to come pick up the child. And the child is coughing like crazy and has a fever and I don't mean to send them back to class with a mask.
Okay, I wasn't sure, so I figured it out.
Mauro, um, are you, I mean, I, I will like to make a motion that we rescind. I just want to move us forward here, because I don't know, we, we have a lot of other policies here, so we either, either have to not rescind it or or rescind it. So I'm gonna make a motion that we um rescind the policy for masks. EBCFA and that we will, um, upon recommendation for the superintendent. That we will revisit um with a, a new policy if um based on new guidance.
Second.
Okay, um, Brian, are you comfortable with that? So if you're, I mean, like, you're closer to, you know, the updates the nurses get from the state. You know, health and stuff, if things do uptick, I mean, we can, even if we need to add it as urgent. Yeah, if we need to add it as urgent business, you know, because we just, we're seeing that spike, you know. I think we all probably agree. I would want, want to make sure that we do have their input on whatever that is, and we're not gonna get that tonight.
No, and if it gets to that point, we'll get that from the CDC or from the Department of Education. Or from the town health agent, who I'm in contact with all those, well, not the CDC, but the town health agent and Desi. I know, surprise, they don't call me.
Yeah, um, any other, uh, Hillary, I hear your, your thoughts. I just don't know how we're going to. Address all that in a policy without making it overly political and angst. I mean, I, I, I'm kind of like the nurse part about. You know, requiring it. I, you know, can see that not going over well. We don't do that now. We never did that for.
No, currently, everybody in the nurse's office has to wear a mask. Um, and that was enforced when my daughter was sick last week. Um, the nurse made a point of saying that she was wearing a mask because everybody in the nurse's office has to wear a mask. Um, and so it would be decreasing the requirement for that to only if the nurse found it medically appropriate. Um.
I think that would be okay, if it's medically appropriate. Would that be a good judgment that we would be comfortable with them?
But if they're doing it already, then.
They're doing it because of this policy.
Right, that's, yeah, that's why you put the policies in place so that people can, you know, so that it's written, that it's been proved. And so everybody's going by the same rules. Maybe rescind this and then maybe you guys come back with a more modified version. Why don't we do that?
I don't think this, this one's outdated clearly, so it's, it's not, you know, in effect, or it's not being executed properly anyway. Um, so I think rescinding and, you know, bringing it back and maybe there might be new guidance next week that comes out or something. Um, I think we're just not gonna do that, be able to do that tonight.
Because, well, when we, when we originally were looking at this, there were, there was not any specific. Um, you know, from the CDC or from Desi, there was not any specific, because they, because basically masks just took this whole thing away. So, um, and we, we, so we're just following the CDC and Desi at this point.
So we're just following the CDC and Desi at this point. And mask.
A lot of big school districts though have decided to keep it, um, this year anyway.
So maybe if we can get another, like, would that, that data or analysis of what, like, if you're looking at other school districts, what their policies are or what they've changed. I'm guessing if they're the same one, it's outdated because it's relying on, you know, guidance that's not there. Or not quite the same. So they're either leaving in place a policy that's not quite updated or they've amended it if they're keeping it.
Yeah, I think that the newspaper articles I read about the schools that are keeping it as is are basically saying. That it's still good medicine to do it, um, even if, like, the reason that the CDC got rid of the five-day. Um, like the mask requirement through day, between day five and day ten. Was because people weren't following it. And so if they have a policy out there that says to do this. And nobody's doing it, people have the false sense of security that nobody's wearing a mask, nobody has COVID. And yet the person sitting next to them could very well have COVID, know it and just not be wearing a mask. And so it was sort of more of a behavioral policy than a medical policy. Like, the medicine hasn't changed. We've always known that masks self-prevent illness. Like, that's not. You know, that, that's not dependent on COVID or like that helps for pneumonia, that helps for colds, like masks just help prevent the spread of airborne disease. Um, and so the schools have said like, they feel like it's not worth the risk of having, you know, with all the pressure on attendance. They want to keep the policy to keep the kids from getting sick and missing school and things like that. Um.
Can, can you, can you guys add it to your list for your next meeting to, I mean, I, I really want to. You know, I don't want to feel like we're not being responsive to those concerns. I just don't. I wouldn't be comfortable adopting something or keeping it with it. The way it is, especially since it's, we put it on here, unless we want to just table. It all together. Um, you know, at this point, I just want to kind of move us forward. So we have a motion on the table. It's been seconded. Um, any, you can either vote on it or, and it, and it stays. Or it resents, so. Morrow.
I think we should vote on it since it's on the table.
Okay, so right now the vote is to.
And we'll see where we end up.
Yeah. You want to vote?
Oh, yes.
Yes, your, is it, is your yes vote to rescind?
Yes, it is.
Okay, okay, sorry. Uh, Alexis.
It's to rescind and to revisit this within the policy committee, subcommittee?
Well, that was kind of what I think part of the, the language was that, you know, with recommendation, because Brian would be part of that. Um, recommendation as well. Yes.
Then I would say yes.
Okay. Mary?
You know, to what Alexis just said, yes, to, to rescind this and then just make sure that we create something or revisit. Um, what we can put in writing to again, help Ryan and to help the nurses. So, and the whole pop, the whole population.
Okay. Hillary?
Um. I'm, I'm okay with that plan, but I think given the timing. Um, with going remote today and the fact that we've had this policy in effect. You know, nothing drastically changed last week to this week that makes it less accurate today than last week. Um, I'm going to vote no.
Okay. Um, I will vote yes. So, um, the motion carries four to one. But I think with everyone, the consensus is. Everyone feels like there's something that should be just looked at a little bit more. And, um, you know, Hillary, I, I do appreciate you highlighting that, those areas, because I don't. Want to make sure the teachers, I mean, the teachers feel safe, obviously, and they don't feel like they don't have. Um. Muscle to be able to, to do what they need to do and the nurses as well. Um, and. Um, we'll be revisiting it at a, at our, um, a future meeting. So Morrow, we'll kind of take your lead on.
Yep.
When, when that would be. Okay. And any data we can get about like what other districts are doing and how they, they've amended it, that would be helpful as well.
Sure.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So. Um. B, which is supposed to say number four oh six gift giving to students, um. We did not find anything. The mask doesn't have a policy about gift giving to students. Um. I, we looked at other, you know, anywhere else and I couldn't find anything else. So, um. So the, the plan is to just rescind it because there's, there is nothing. Um. Mask, mask, I think rescind, either rescinded theirs or doesn't have a, a, um, comparable. Um.
Yeah, it is, it is. I'm reading and I'm like, we're just like giving money and for, like, oh yeah, I don't, I don't. Glad we were rescinding. I'll be, I'll be glad. I don't know if anyone else has any, um, desire to keep it. Maybe that would be. I don't. Alexis.
Yeah, I felt like I wouldn't even know what I wanted to change it to, but I think it's weird if we have a policy saying, you know, they can't give. Gift, they can give gifts to their own children. It's like, yeah, no kidding. And saying, you know, you can't give a gift more than two hundred dollars. I don't really want a future given a gift that's a hundred and fifty dollars, so.
Right, definitely an outdated policy. Um, all right. So where we'll be, okay, I'll just hold that. And we'll do a, a larger lump sum if we can of a vote.
Um, okay.
Morrow, the exit interview one, is that?
So that one, um, what we decided to do is. We're rescinding the entire, the. The entirety of this exit interview five eighteen, but we took the last, um. The last paragraph of this and we added it to the end of ILD. Okay, so ILD is ju, is an update. With that, uh, that one paragraph. It's at, it's the, like, the second to last.
Got it. So that's why we were doing an amend.
Right.
That one. And then we'll be rescinding this one. Okay.
Then I see, um, Mary made a comment to edit the title and I like that idea.
Yeah, because otherwise we're, I mean, the, the exit interviews are so, we're saying they're so important, but nobody's going to be able to find where, where it falls in. So just to add that to the title.
Okay.
Is what I would recommend.
I, I like that as well. Um. Alexis, any thoughts on, on that?
No, no, I thi, I think it's fine making those changes.
Um, just in the interest of accuracy, we basically just moved that paragraph over, but I changed the wording from. That the surveys will be made available to families to will be requested of families because. I know when my child left her last school. We got a personal email from the dean of students requesting that we fill out the survey and how important it was to them and. It went on and on about how important the survey was and how they would use it. And it, it like compelled me. To actually take the time to fill it out versus if somebody just said, oh, here's a survey if you feel like it, you know.
They made you feel guilty enough.
Yeah.
Um. That sounds good. Brian, and just to confirm, I know this, because this is really. Falls on, um. You guys for executing the surveys and all this. This is, those suggestions from the school committee seem okay with you.
Yeah, we'll make sure that we send out a letter with the surveys and a link to do it electronically.
Great. Okay. All right. So, um, so we talked about Morrow, the exit one. Is there anything else on the, because I know we have, they go back to four hundred. On.
No, there's no, there is no other, nothing else on five eighteen or ILD.
Okay, great. And then.
And so, um, so mask does not have. A policy that talks about personnel policies goals. Um, so. Um. We. Felt it was, you know, something that we should. Well, hold on. They used to have a policy. That they then took away. Because they basically are, were saying that. Each district should have their own personnel policies goals. So that's basically what we're doing is we're taking the, the four hundred. And there are, you know, a few changes, um, and updates within it to reflect. Maynard Public Schools, um, like the policy numbers updated, the cross-reference. Um. So that's, that's what the difference between four hundred and GA. So basically we're just recodifying and updating, um, four hundred to GA.
Okay. Thank you, um. Mary, any questions?
I was fine with this, yeah.
Great. Alexis?
This one I'm not going to vote on. Because of the potential conflict.
Okay.
Um, so if possible, if we could separate. This one out, that would be lovely.
We will do that. Um. Hillary, anything to add on?
Nope, I would, this was, this made a lot of sense.
Okay. All right. And, um, all right. So what I'll do is we did the mask one. Um, we have. Two straight. Rescinds. So I'm gonna, um. Make a motion that we rescind. The gift giving to students policy.
That's number four oh six.
Number four oh six and the exit interview five one eight.
I can second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right. So roll call, um, Mary?
Yes.
Alexis?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Natasha, yes. So. So those two policies are rescinded out, right? And then I'm going to break these two updates up. So we're going to start with. Um. Policy ILD. Um, we, I will make a motion that we update policy ILD, including with edits. To add, um, exit interviews. Exit surveys as recommended by the policy subcommittee.
I can second.
Any further discussion? Okay, uh, roll call Alexis?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Natasha? Yes, almost forgot to say yes, so yeah. It's waiting for her. Okay, um, so then we will move on to this one. Okay. And so this is the one. Um. For policy four hundred, we're gonna, we'll make a motion that we. Um, recodify policy four hundred for personnel policies to instead. Policy GA and update as recommended.
A second.
Okay, and, um. Alexis, is this, this is the one that you want to recuse yourself of?
Yep.
Okay, got it. All right. So, um. Any other discussions from anyone else? Okay, um. Then. Morrow?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Natasha, yes. Okay, so motion carries four and one abstention. Thank you all. And we got through policies. Oh, my goodness. Um. Awesome. Any other updates? I'm just curious for the things that you guys have. With everything else, is it?
Nothing, nothing yet. So, um, Hillary and I will, um. Plan our next, um, meeting and then we'll, we'll plug through the, the ones that we need to do.
Okay. Um, all right. So let me just close out all my policy documents. I'm so glad that we're. Pushing right along there. Um. Now moving on to, um, special town meeting prep and, um. The alumni article. So just a couple of quick updates. Last night. The select board, um. Approved the warrant, but, um, they, we have a couple of people have to put comments still and FinCom still needs to have their comments. So we will, I will send those over. Um, for tomorrow morning, uh, you know, I have them in the folder right now. We can kind of go over them a little bit and edit wherever folks feel. You know, would like to edit. Um. And then FinCom is meeting on Monday. I'll go to their meeting just to see if they have any additional questions. Um. You know, to hear what their final recommendation will be. And then this will be included in the warrant that gets, it goes to print. Um, for Tuesday, so. The, um, areas that I, the takeaways I, I added in like the, that, you know, seven fifty seats. I tried to break it out in a way that I felt like it was like topic specific in the comments. I don't, it just felt easier to, to maybe read and digest a bit. And got a little bit more. I, I've been looking at this probably so long and just hearing feedback. But what not to include and what to include, um. The select board, you know, had an opinion about, there's a sentence in there about the potential to, you know, have for the school be looking for an operational. Things. I thought that, you know, we committed to just trying to be transparent about that. That is, this is more of a capital expense, but. Um, there could be, um, FY twenty-six, a short budget shortfall for operation. Um, on the horizon. Um. I didn't get too much into the like dollars necessarily, except for the annual bleacher rental. Um. But I do, I would like, and this is just more of a matter of timing. Um. Printing out like a, a spreadsheet that will later on, like, you know, where we have a handout for, um, maybe like school that shows. Cause I keep getting asked this question. I just haven't had time to price it out. Like, what does it cost for escalation for like the ADA bleachers? You know, over, um, you know, fifteen years plus adding in. Um, rentals, you know, like, eh, things that are not met with the code, because there was still last night. Um, feedback that. Maybe rental is still an option and I, I, I'm not seeing that in what the code requirements are, because we're not meeting. Like the curb and the ADA pathway. That's not something that can be cured by rental. Um. And you don't have ha, additional hand sinks and drinking stations. So. I, I try to put that in there as well. Even if we rented it, that would be. Cost prohibitive over, you know, fifteen years, you would have, you're, you're spending less. Just buying bleachers in fifteen years and doing all that in a permanent way, so. Um. And then. You know, this might not go anywhere. It could be that, you know, we, people vote on it in the select board are still not, um. Willing to, you know, proceed with the ballot. I didn't get the warm fuzzies last night that that much has changed. So. I think the question really for us or the conversation is that. We have not been. Given any direction. On what, if not this, what else? Like, it's just the comments from the town. Feedback is not a priority. So what is that, what does that mean? Cause really we will have to make, if this doesn't pass at town meeting. Or if it passes and that there's no, no subsequent ballot vote, the school committee is going to have to decide about. Tearing down the bleachers because we're not meeting code and we don't have the funds. To do all this extra stuff to do that. And that is going to be. Um, and we have no funding source to move forward with anything else. So it will be. Like no bleachers. Cause we can't rent, we can't continue to rent without doing all this other stuff knowingly. So I know, Brian, that's not a easy conversation to think about, but I, I think. It is something as a reality. If we don't secure funding for this project. Um. We need to think about, start pivoting to a world with, um, demoing and what. And what that might be. So anyway.
So do, does it, um, does your description, and I'd love to be able to read this later and give you notes tomorrow, but, um, I wrote a couple, but. Um, does this talk about that? If we don't get this, this is the, the result, we're going to have. Cheers and everybody's going to have to bring chairs.
Well, I didn't, I didn't.
No, but I mean, it's, it's true. I mean, we need to tell people, I, it's really important that we're putting this. Article on, because we're, we've been told left, right and center that we've got to do something. We're putting in front of the people and if everybody decides no. Then we need to tell them, this is, this is what it's going to look like afterwards.
So there's a couple of things that there's, the sponsor comments are supposed to be more like factual, you know, like this is the, but I think there's a separate piece where the school committee can, you know, do an. Advocating, like it's within our authority to do like a separate. School committee message that speaks about those pieces. Um, I was trying to, because this is on a, this is going to be on a warrant and it's more like. Election kind of thing. Um, there are certain kind of, you know what I mean? There's certain things with the debt exclusion, how much you can try to. Sway or advocate versus just inform. Um, so I kind of went back and forth like, like how much was too much, you know. Opinion, you know, versus like factual information. Um, but the reality is, yeah, I could certainly, I think emphasize somewhere and there that. Um. You know, there is no funding source, like there's no zero cost. That's the actually, thank you for bringing it. There's no zero cost option. Um, without this, there'll be, you know, we will have no option to, to do. And I think I mentioned there, but I, I don't think I emphasized. don't think I emphasized it, and maybe, maybe, I think it might be the next, let me see.
And, and that's exactly what we did with Green Meadow, I mean, it's factual.
It's factual, yeah, there's no, there's no funding source, yeah, yeah, after this, okay, so I will make sure that I, I look at that a little bit more to expand on that, but
I would maybe add a section that says, you know, alternative options, or, and then lay out what the alternative is.
There's not really alternative, that's the problem, like
Well, but I mean, if people are gonna read this and think, so what's the, like, is, you know, and they're gonna think, well, let's just keep the bleachers we have, and like particularly people who don't go to the field and have no idea, and are just thinking, okay, this is great, you want this, but just stick with what you have. Am I saying like something along the lines of alternative options, or um, what a no vote entails, or in some way, just factually lay out?
What a no vote means.
If this is not, without this plan, here's what we have.
I like, I like what you said, like what a no vote means, um, because I think that's what, if this doesn't pass, right? Um, what is that, what does that leave us, okay? I'll, 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 I think that's, that's, because I did put in here, um, yeah, I'll do that, I'll add that in there, um.
And I'll take a better look at it after our meeting, just
Yeah, 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 I don't, I don't have to send it over until the morning, so, um, and it's just gonna go, it's gonna go to FinCom and um, so and I'm like just hearing last night and trying to get people's feedback, I mean, like the CPC and, um, although that's looking like a, a no-go at this point. Alright, um, so everyone has any like thoughts or wanna look over it tonight, send me anything, you know, happy to update it, incorporate it, I know that a prior vote gave me the authorization to to amend that already, so I don't think we need to go through a formal thing, I just wanted to make sure you guys, like I wasn't completely off base, it incorporated the, the topics like the historical piece, like um, what got us here, the inspection, like those are the a- areas, a little bit more of the story behind the scenes, um, but I also didn't wanna, you know, be like, like right now, clearly the select board is not in favor of it, but, or, I don't know, not all of them. They do plan on putting um, out their own message, they said last night, and I asked if you know, I asked how, like, what that would be, and it would be, would it be like an advocating? And they didn't have one ready, so I think it's gonna be kind of like last year when we had that for annual town meeting, when we had our own, or the year before, was it, uh, they had our own article and they put together this message, I think it's gonna be something like that, so we might have a separate. We'll see how the response is, um, now that, also we may hear, now that the community's back in session, you know? Because this, all, all the conversations about not proceeding happened over the summer when pa- uh, parents and families were really not around, so I think, I don't know.
Thank you for putting this together, this is good, yeah, it's a lot easier to critique it than to actually create it to begin with, so thank you.
Yeah, I know, and um, and it, again, it's, I don't know if there's always gonna be a right, everyone wants to see a different version of it, and I'm just it's always hard, I get always get, so like, re- rewriting, this is like the fourth, fifth revision of myself. So for special town meeting, Brian, um, from a planning purpose, I know that we'll have to be there, will Mike, can we see if Mike can join if there's any questions about the task force? Okay, that would be great, I don't expect him to like, to come up and do the presentation, but just to be on hand if people are asking about like field use or um, you know, capacity questions or things like that, you know, it'd be great for him to be able to speak to that. And I don't know if anyone else wants to, this is gonna have to be a school committee, anyone wants to speak on this, or is it something that folks want, want me to? Um, we have time to think about that, but we'll, you know, happy to, you know, tag team with anyone as well. Um, so it's not all one, but we will have to speak on the article itself as a school committee and um, be able to field questions from, from the community as the sponsors, so we can
I'm assuming that Justin will be there, Tomaco, just because he, he, he might be helpful too for questions that come up about, you know, the actual condition of them.
Yeah, I think Justin will be there, um, you know, I think it'll be tough because they have water infrastructure stuff that um, you know, and actually I just thought about which I need to add in there, that this, the capscom recommendation. I wanna include that in there, that the capscom recommended this as a priority project as well at that meeting, so, okay. Any other questions about special, is everyone able to, I know it's a little bit away, but if everyone just start planning, make sure that you're gonna be there, it's like it doesn't look like there's a lot of articles that are gonna be on the wa- the warrant, so I think we're in luck about that, there wasn't anything for the seniors um, that were presented as a subcommittee, but who knows if individuals, you know, come up. And then there was the other special town, um, so this the budget is being updated as well, so the school will be getting an additional seventy-six, approximate seventy-six thousand dollars. The, this came up in our budget subcommittee meeting, but also what I noticed on the, the warrant is that it looks like it's baking it into our operational budget, because there, it wasn't a way, I think legally to transfer directly to the um, facilities account. So what's gonna happen, I think, and Wayne can, um, Brian, I think we hadn't had a chance to talk about this yet, but because I think what we're gonna happen, because we're not used to getting extra money when it is a budget revision, I think we're gonna have to do like an amended budget allocation just for that se- that seventy-six thousand, and um, and maybe allocate it to that, like, cost center for like building or maintenance or whatever. However, we, we do that, we can discuss that a little bit more in our, in our subcommittee, but um, because
Select board was okay with it, the select board was the way, okay with the way that it was distributed?
I think the select board took Greg's recommendation, but um, but you, there was a comment from select board like, oh, they're just, you know, they can just do whatever they want with their money, you know, it's like I mean, you would think that we're like, you know, going out buying lottery tickets with all this extra money. Um, but anyway, it just, I don't know, it just, it just rubs me the wrong way, because it's just such a, yeah. Um, so that's why I just kind of, to reinforce the transparency and the intent, you know, that it is gonna be put towards maintenance, it's not gonna be put towards you know, another staff person or whatever, and whatever we can do to, to show um, that we were not acting in bad faith, and you know, in that um, discussion, because it can't go to a facility account directly. I think the best option would be that when we, we will amend, after town meeting, we just, we would amend, like a quick amending to our budget um, for that particular cost center. That's kind of what I'm thinking, so something along those lines, and we can flush that out later. Alright, and that's, I think it for special town meeting planning, um, that I had. So let me pull back up the agendas, now we have just uh, oh, chair report. The thanks for the work for the, that was put into the um, election, the primaries, that was really great, um, I also just wanted to, you know, acknowledge that, you know, schools started, and you know, around our country, we're already seeing um, school violence and um, and active shooters, which is uh, not, you know, just not what we, we would wanna be thinking about at this point already. So just my, you know, condolences, and I think everyone probably feels that, you know, just that angst, that anxiety that comes with those type of situations, I know Brian, you educators, our students who are in the building, I never had to grow up with that experience. And it's, you know, it's a harsh reality, I think, for everyone to face, so just my appreciation for all the work that the staff do to protect our students. Um, fire department, police department, everyone um, that we are, we are safe today. Um, because of the protocols we have in place, but um, also thinking about those who were lost and hurt in the recent incident in Georgia. I don't have really anything else except uh, Mary, budget-wise, there's a couple of dates that we
I saw that, they were
Okay, okay, great, yeah, okay, um, and then coming up soon, Jeff and I will start meeting for our leadership meetings, so that's gonna, I think it's maybe next week or the week after. Um, so we'll have an opportunity to connect and hopefully issues we can discuss, so those will be reestablished. Alright, um, subcommittees, um, Mary, anything?
No, nothing, nothing tonight.
You know what, I forgot to mention, we're gonna be going to visit the seniors, speaking of
Oh, yes, that's right, that's next, next Friday at eleven P M.
Eleven thirty at night, right? They, they put it
That's, that's what the paper said, yeah. But we'll be there eleven A M, just in case anybody shows up.
Yeah, 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 well, uh, yeah, hopefully they won't be surprised, or maybe they will be, yeah, so
Good opportunity, yeah, and, and Mauro, what, we have to start, and, and you're the one that keeps nudging us, so you need to nudge us early that um, we need to do a better job this year about the outreach to the schools and stuff. So I for one, have fallen down on that piece, so.
Yeah, and I, and I, um, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead. I'll, I'll touch on it when you get to me.
No, I was just gonna say, um, I know the office hours, the select board talked last night, that they were, like, they went over their goals, and I know we also talked about doing a school committee office hours in some way, and I did see, maybe it was Sudbury, I didn't save where, one of the school districts um, nearby had some type of like, on their school committee page, like, hey, drop in, it was like a remote option too, so like, people could I think it was like make an appointment, you know, at a certain time and just show up, so like you could just be, you know, at your home, whatever, and someone might, if you have an appointment, that someone books. So I, I don't know if that kind of option would that flexibility, so if someone be like, hey, you know, ask some, you know, ask a school committee a question. You know, it might give that person who just wants to show up, you know, just to ask a random question about like, hey, town meeting's coming up, let me, what do you, what do you know about, can you tell me about this particular thing about the bleachers, or whatever, I don't know, um. So, that's something
Um, near the bleachers.
You're funny.
Maybe before a football game or something.
I was just gonna say before the first football game, maybe Thanksgiving morning. Well, there, there are games being played, I was there earlier for, for the boys soccer varsity varsity team, so you could potentially do, do something, you know, either during it, have a table, so.
All I do is get, I, last year just going to the games when this was kind of, people complained, that's it, like, oh, so I, it was hard to kind of get like feedback necessarily, because everyone, you're looking, exactly to your point, Hillary, people are looking at it.
People to like power up to advocate, you know?
Yeah, well, I, I think once people hear the message and the warrant goes out, and people see the comments and stuff, I think what they'll, you know, people will
Maybe we could print out that page, or, and um, a modified version of that page, because I, I don't get the warrant in the mail, and you know, there's probably people who don't go, regularly go to town meeting who potentially go to games at the bleachers and could be encouraged to go to the town meeting by saying, you know, if you don't like the state of our bleachers, come October seventh.
Yeah, and that, we can use some of that to do our, like, our, our message, like to be more advocating for like our, our school committee, like a letter, so maybe um, I'll look at the calendar to see where we can finalize our own letter, and that will be something that we can um, get printed. Yeah, ahead of time, we can post it, you know, a couple of weeks before um, town meeting, and then and then make sure it's available for when people are checking in to go to their, um, alright, that's a good idea, thanks.
Oh, actually, maybe um, the students who do the table to pay for the football game, they would wanna encourage too, and people might be interested in listening to the words of the students more than us.
Um, I think because it's an election, I'm just gonna play devil's advocate, there's, you gotta be careful on how you get staff and stuff to um, advocate for school purposes, I think we as elected officials have a different, you know, our role policy, but what municipal employees or public employees.
I meant the kids that do, there's, there's students that, you know, stand at the table to collect money to enter
Yeah, I would just be a little bit
Not adults.
No, but there are adults there also who, who sometimes, and I just, I don't know, I, that would be my caution, after reading it a little bit, I just don't want it to get ugly. Um, Jimmy, anyway. Okay, uh, Colleen, a question for you, uh, I can listen here, um, student reps. If we could get, and I know they were gonna be doing elections soon, um,
Have student reps, they voted last um, June, um, but I will reach out to Liz.
Okay, yeah, I just wanna kind of
Give her the schedule.
Yeah, if we can get, like, schedule them on their next meeting, I'd love to see who's here and be able to put them on our next agenda item to pencil it in, so we can great, thank you so much, uh, alright, Mauro?
That, I'm glad you brought that up, because I was wondering, um, when they were gonna come back to give us some, some input. Um, I also wanted to touch base uh, again, um, about outreach, um, what I can do is um, contact um, this doctor off about SAC. Um, and then the three, well, it's looking like just two P T Os, because it's looking like we do not have a high school P T O right now. So I can look at those and, and then populate our spreadsheet for this year. And then, and then also, um, maybe I should touch base with um, the principals to talk about maybe doing some, some outreach earlier in the year, because I know that Karen had suggested that um, that we do um, in earlier in the year, um, meet with teachers and things instead of waiting until the very end of the year. Um, and then the other thing is um, goals for finalizing goals for us. Finalizing goals for Brian, we really need to do that. I'm hoping like the next, our next meeting, we can do either come up with some, you know, the ones that we're gonna do, and then the next one we um, vote, but we need to
Agreed, and um, Brian and I had talked about it earlier this week as well, so I know he's I don't wanna speak to you, Brian, but I just remember um, looking at the takeaways from the pre- prior evaluation, the action plans, and I think that's where you were kind of um, going with the, those draft goals, Brian?
Yep, I'll be able to send a draft tomorrow.
Oh, great, thank you.
Fantastic, thank you.
Absolutely.
Um, and I think that's, that's all I've got, um, other than mentioning to Hillary that we need to schedule a policy meeting, so.
I'll email you, I'll message you tonight, because I'm looking at my calendar and I have some ideas.
Okay, great.
Alexis?
I don't have anything tonight.
Um, Mary, did you?
Nope, I'm toward anything else.
Okay, um, and I don't have anything else except for what was already shared, so I think now we'll move on to there were no
Tenth agenda, we do not have any minutes for tonight.
Right, no minutes, but we did have um,
Warrants.
Warrants to accept.
Twenty-five zero zero nine to thirteen.
Got it, here we go, okay. I will go ahead um, without objection, move that we accept approved warrants twenty-five zero zero nine, twenty-five zero one zero, twenty-five zero zero, no, twenty-five zero one one, twenty-five zero one two, twenty-five zero one three. Alrighty, no, hearing no objections, those are accepted. And I did wanna just point out, because I had asked um, just for the warrants, I had a couple of questions about them, and I, just to share, um, there is um, ClearGov that was on the most recent ones, and I had, um, so we can, Wayne, we can talk about that in our budget subcommittee, because I know that there's some enhancements or whatever, um, that help functionality-wise, and um, but I also wanna make sure, because I know the town is using ClearGov for their budgeting purposes, and I just wanna make sure that we're not incurring additional costs in support of the town um, for their, you know, to help them with their budgeting stuff, so I just wanna understand the value and what we're doing a little bit more. Um, it sounds like Um, it sounds like, it looks fine, but I just know we had stepped away from it um, at one point because it was, it seemed like an. A necessary cost, but that was the only um. Follow up that will, we can do. And Keith, I actually, for you, before I forget, CPAC is looking to. Hold an event. In next month in Fowler. So you're going to get an email about just space. And, and date commitment and see, I don't, I can't, can't remember what the date was. It actually will be me emailing you, but just so you know, but it'll be for CPAC. And um, so just as a heads up, so they are looking to kind of um, get folks together and kind of reconnect with the community as well, which I think is great.
So that'd be evening time during the daytime?
It was, it was going to be, I think, a Friday. I don't have my exact day, a Friday evening. Yeah, so it'd be like after like six, so like after basic kind of. Um, in the cafeteria, you know, so I think it was, they were looking to do um, like maybe like a, a paint pumpkin painting or something like that. Like mini pumpkins or, you know, just to kind of like that food, because food kind of gets a little, you know, crazy, but just an activity where parents could drop in if they have kids and. Seasonal, um, so we're going to try to explore something like that, but I'll get the date over to you um, by early next week for sure. Maybe tomorrow, but early next week, okay?
I'll be looking for it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, then I think that is it. So I will go ahead and entertain a motion that we adjourn.
Make that motion.
Okay, second, did somebody second that?
Yeah, I second.
Oh, all right, Mauro second, okay. Um, roll call, Mauro?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Alexis?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Natasha? Yes. All right, we are adjourned. Thank you all for attending and hanging on. We got it in there before nine o'clock.
Yes, impressive. All right, good night, everybody.
Good night.